I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for July 2nd, 2019. Invite you to stand if you choose while I invite Police Chaplain Andy Toops from the Lutheran Church Provider Invocation, followed by Commissioner Denning leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
By the God, we come before you today and we give you thanks and praise for another day that we can serve you in this community. Lord, we ask that you would put a hedge of protection around all those who serve us in every role in this community. We thank you for the beautiful place that we live. And we ask now, Lord, that you would bless this meeting with calm and peace and help the commissioners get the work done tonight. And we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. Some awards.
Yes, I want to just have Cameron Hightower stand for a moment. She is a sophomore at Greenwood High School and she was shadowing me this afternoon and for this evening's meeting. So I wanted to welcome her and give her a round of applause for jumping into public service in this way today.
Have any city manager comments tonight?
I do not, Mayor.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes for our regular meeting on June 18th, 2019.
I'll move.
Second. Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2019-29.
Ordinance granting franchise related to telecommunications system. Ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications or related non-cable franchise to North Central Communications Incorporated for the use of rights-of-way for the operation and maintenance of a telecommunications or related non-cable system within the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
I'll move.
Second. Perigin, second by Denning. This is a second reading. Just a reminder that all of our franchises are not exclusive. Anyone can come in and this is just for anything not related to cable TV. And the franchise is only for the use of our right-of-way and we don't control their operations. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. A second reading of ordinance BG 2019-30.
Ordinance annexing property by consent. Ordinance annexing 11.75 acres of property located on the US 31W Connector Road from Kelly Road to the CSX Railroad owned by the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and 20.53 acres of right-of-way for a total of 32.28 acres with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigin. Second reading of a description that we had from the last meeting. Any further questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2019-31.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance amending, ordinance approving amendment number three to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year 2019.
I'll move. Second.
Perigin, second by Nash. It's the second reading of an ordinance for a budget that we discussed last meeting. Any further questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-108.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Marzana Muyanovich and Megan Sundell to the position of communications dispatcher in the police department.
I'll move.
Second. By Nash, second by Denning.
We are still in the process of trying to get staff back up in dispatch and we have two candidates we'd like to bring to you tonight. And I'll turn it over to Aaron Holsey, our HR Director, to give you an overview.
Afternoon. We recently went through a recruitment process for communication dispatchers. At this time, we are minus five of our complement and we will be recommending two to be added to our staff and start their training. This particularly process, we started in the month of March and we will be getting another one probably in September or October. We received 148 applications, which was pretty close on par to what we did with our last cycle. We were at about 151 last time. We had 39 applicants show up to take the LESI. We selected 13 applicants that had went through the polygraph and 12 of those applicants had a background check processed by our police detectives. We selected seven for an interview and the interview panel consisted of Lieutenant Colonel Delaney, Major Edwards, Amelia Bowen from police, and myself from human resources. Due to the constraints of our training department, we decided to select only two applicants to bring on and start training. They're going to start in two weeks, I believe, in order for them to have a very successful training process, which is very involved. There's a pre-academy, followed by academy, post-academy, and then a probationary period. We have to have the right amount of trainers. We have to have the right schedule in place. And due to some constraints in dispatch right now, due to a couple of different reasons, we've decided that two is a good number for us to take on. However, of the people that we did interview, there were three other candidates that we decided to give conditional offers to, to start their training in December. And at that time, we will have many more trainers. Some are being, some are going through the process right now to become trainers. And so we will be in a much better place in December to proceed with training more individuals. So I would like to introduce you to Megan Sundell and Marzana Muyanovich. If you all would like to stand, please. Megan is a graduate of Warren Central High School and has been attending South Central Kentucky Technical College towards an associate of science degree. She's had various jobs with high levels of responsibilities such as a CNA at the medical center and the psychiatric floor, a deputy jailer at Warren County Regional Jail, and currently serves as a pre-trial officer at the officer of the courts. Marzana is a graduate of Franklin Simpson High School. Her work experience consists of many high-volume and customer-service-focused positions in restaurants, Walmart, and most recently at an AT&amp;T authorized dealer in Franklin, Kentucky. We are very eager to begin their training and we will presenting the other candidates later this year.
Comments or questions?
Would you be related to Keenan?
No.
Okay.
I know what you're asking.
We love Keenan.
All right. Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Congratulations. Glad to have you working with us. Municipal order 2019-109.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Freda Eggleton to the Bowling Green Code Enforcement and Nuisance Board.
Moved.
Second.
Nash, second by Perigin. Extend our sympathies to the Wilder family and the loss of Dr. Wilder. We know Ms. Eggleton from her long work at Western and involved with matters of committee review of different issues and think she'll be a good addition to the code enforcement board. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-110.
Municipal order authorizing accepting bid number 2019-64, 65 for a NetApp E-Series upgrade for the police department from Jbk Network Consulting LTD of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $141,805.50.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash. Urgent, Mr. Masl.
We use the NetApp Storage Area Network for a lot of our storage for critical data and databases. IT went out for bid to upgrade and replace SAN, the Storage Area Network, to the one that covers the police in-car and body cameras. It's reached its end of its life. It's needing to be expanded and also by purchasing this newer one, we will address the, for more capacity and an updated service level, support level. We got one bid from Jbk Network Consulting for the 141-805-50 and are recommending to accept that bid. Lynn Hartley is here if you have any questions.
Comments or questions?
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-111.
Municipal order authorizing accepting bid number 2019-05 for the fiscal year 2019 sidewalk construction program from Infinity Pipeline Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $357,792.70.
I'll move.
Perigin, second by Nash.
This is our FY19 sidewalk allocation that we went out for bid for. There are several streets here. We are going to propose new sidewalks on Kenton Street, Park Street, Magnolia, North Lee Drive, Sanders Street, and Potter Avenue. We went out for bid. We got four bids. Infinity Pipeline was the lowest bidder at 357-792-70. They're going to come in, do curb and gutter, the five-foot sidewalks, AD8 compliance, all that thing, that stuff. Tie-ins with the asphalt with driveways and then seed and grass at all that. 6300 linear feet of sidewalk and we are recommending to go with Infinity Pipeline.
We worked with them before?
I believe we have. Is, Kyle, would you, or Greg, you here?
Good afternoon. Yes, as a matter of fact, recently, they subcontracted for the concrete work on the small house Phase II project. So they did the curb and gutter and then they did the multi-use path as well as some of the work with sidewalks adjacent to drop boxes, et cetera. So we have.
Can I also ask, I remember having a separate concrete contract, maybe at our last meeting, that we contracted with someone to do our concrete for the, how is that related or separate to this?
It's different. That's supplying just bulk concrete.
Got it.
That we use for anything we need in the city. Public works, parks and rec. So that's a delivery bid rather than a delivery and installation bid.
And does this process use our store of concrete or they provide their own with this bid?
They provide their own.
Okay.
That's additional. Thank you.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2019-32.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 23 Water and Sewer, Subchapter 23-3 Sewer System of the City of Bowling Green code of ordinances as proposed by Bowling Green Municipal Utilities.
I'll move.
Nash, second by Denning. Mr. Masl.
GMU is proposing these amendments to Chapter 23 after an evaluation they had done on the water. There is a table in your packet showing the level of pollutants that's allowed. They are proposing some changes, limits on some four pollutants, and then also requiring lower limits on six others and eliminating, I'm going to take a stab at this one, molybdenum, completely taking it out, removing it. Mike Gardner is here if you have any questions. But this is to update the Chapter 23 for pollutants in our water system.
Comments or questions?
Would Mr. Gardner mind kind of walking us through this process? There's a lot of interesting terms here and I think the public in terms of related to our water quality would be great to hear from you about what exactly all this means.
And Mr. Masl did very well. Molybdenum. This is part of our ongoing permitting process from EPA and the Environmental Cabinet, Division of Water. We go through these reviews every approximately five years and it's overseen by Division of Water. They have gone through this after we did the evaluation and approved it. There was a public hearing on these changes. Essentially, the changes are brought about by changes in water quality and what's happening in our system. Essentially, what it does is establish limits on these various chemicals so that it protects the wastewater treatment plant and it protects the receiving water. It makes sure that we have the ability to treat them to a reasonable level and that it's not going to go through the plant and harm any of the fish or fauna, flora fauna in the river. So this process was evaluated. We had a consultant do this that has helped us through this process multiple times. Some of the limits, as Mr. Masl said, have gone up. Some have come down. That's based on our actual treatment ability with our process and what the industries are discharging to us. So that's a basic review of what we're talking here. Some of these sound scary, but they are common in most systems and basically the purpose of this is just to regulate, to make sure that they stay within appropriate limits for discharge.
Would you mind just going through the list of the elements that are the pollutants that we're changing and to maybe talk through how this isn't changing or making us more at risk for pollution, but sort of a little bit about where it comes from and how we're keeping us safe?
Sure. And let me preface too, this is not drinking water. This is wastewater. It's going back into the river. So we're protecting the river and any downstream purposes there. So essentially arsenic, which is a naturally occurring element in the environment, it comes from groundwater and surface water as it, as the water moves through the earth and went on and picks it up. We don't have any natural, or excuse me, we don't have any industries that are discharging arsenic. We just don't have any that are using it. But we do get a limit nevertheless and that's established by EPA. So it's going from .69 milligrams per liter to .46. Cadmium is going up just a little bit from .02 to .04. We may have some metal platers where some cadmium may come into play, but that's very, very limited in that particular parameter. No change on chlorides. It's staying at 1,600 milligrams per liter. No change in chromium, 2.77 milligrams per liter. Chromium, hexavalent chromium is going down a little bit from 1.31 to 0.84. That's based on the water quality. We do have some metal platers that have some chromium, I believe, in their waste stream. So basically, it's adjusting for those discharges. Similarly, on copper, it's currently at 1.12 milligrams per liter, going down to 0.73. Cyanide, total cyanide, up just slightly from .15 milligrams per liter to .16. Lead is going down just a little bit from .20 to .16. Mercury, no change, .001 milligrams per liter. Nickel is going down slightly, 1.89 to 1.43. And molybdenum, as we mentioned, is being removed. We're not land applying our waste biosolids anymore, so that's why that comes off the list. It's not a, it's not a parameter that impacts us on the water stream, only on the solid stream. Silver is increasing the allowance a little bit from .11 to .62. Again, I don't know the particulars on that other than our treatment process is being more efficient on that. We do have a new process that we're treating wastewater and that's probably because of the efficiency of that process of why that's allowing more to be discharged to us because we can remove more through the treatment plant. Selenium likewise from .04 is going up fairly significantly to .292. That's a large jump, but that's a process ability that we can treat to. And while that sounds like, and it is, percentage-wise, a large increase, the concentrations are still very small, less than one milligram per liter. No change in sulfide. Zinc is going down just slightly from 2.21 to 2.08 milligrams per liter. So that's probably all and more you wanted to know on concentration.
I'm grateful that you're walking through this with us. We talked a little bit when I was just wanting to be more educated about this earlier, but would you share what you share with me in terms of even though we're raising these limits, which is recommended by the EPA, that our industries are not close to these? And sort of talk a little bit about this limit versus what actually is being discharged and all of that.
Absolutely. Anytime we get change in limits, we're concerned, particularly if the limits get tighter. We want to make sure that we understand what the impacts are to local industries. We've done a review of these limits. We've gone back two or three years on every one of our categorical industrial discharges that may have these parameters and determined that it may have a slight impact, but it's not enough to significantly move the needle on those where they would have any problems with compliance. Those industries are well under based on what they're discharging. So it won't require a process change. It shouldn't require anything from local industry. So there won't be a financial or other environmental impact to them.
Much.
Mm-hmm.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
First reading of ordinance BG 2019-33.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 26.95 acres from AG Agriculture to PUD Planned Unit Development located at 4031 Old Scottsville Road, presently owned by the Club at Old Stone LLC, care of James Scott.
I'll move.
Second. Perigin, second. First reading of a unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning for rezoning at Old Stone. Are there any of your comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-112.
Municipal order consenting to the dissolution of the Convention Center Corporation, a nonprofit, non-stalk Kentucky public corporation, and after the payment of any obligations consenting to the distribution of its remaining assets to the city of Bowling Green.
I'll move.
Second.
Perigin, second by Nash. Just at our Convention Center meeting previous to this, are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2019-113.
Municipal order authorizing the creation of a bank account at US Bank for Kent Convention Center funds.
I'll move.
Second.
Also discussed at the 3:30 meeting, we are, since we are dissolving the Convention Center entity, we were in need to move the assets, cash, and investments over to a city account under the city's federal tax ID number. And so we are asking for your approval to create a new bank account. We, this is under our financial policies and procedures that anytime we create a new bank account, it comes before this board for approval. It's just good internal control. So Katie has been working So, Katie has been working on this, to set this up with our existing depositor, or depository, US Bank, to provide for this new bank account for the Convention Center funds. Katie's here to answer any questions you might have.
Call the roll.
Eastly Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Fission on what priorities for?
I'd like to ask Kyle Hunt to come up and present to you the FY '20 sidewalk program. Kyle?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, it's that time of year again. As Mr. Mizel stated, we are ready to present our recommended projects for the FY '20 sidewalk construction program. Before I talk about the specific locations, as we typically do every year, I would like to provide a brief update on the status of the program. Founded in FY 2008, the purpose of the sidewalk program was to enable Bowling Green to become a more pedestrian-friendly or more walkable city. And since that time, we have constructed a little over 82,000 linear feet, or just over fifteen and a half miles of new sidewalk throughout Bowling Green. For this year's budget that was recently approved, there is $500,000 allocated for the program. Commissioner Denning, did you have a question?
No, no, no.
Okay. There have been a couple of revisions to the program throughout its history. One was in 2013, where we revised a portion of the public involvement. That, a part of that was to introduce comment cards that allowed the residents for the selected neighborhoods to provide feedback before we enter survey and design services. Again, that was in 2013, and Karen Foley with Neighborhood and Community Services, we'll talk a little bit more about that for each specific project in a moment. And then all, and then also in 2018, we had what have been the most significant revisions to date. With those, we actually changed some of the scoring criteria, we eliminated some, we added others, and we redistributed how the points are allocated to each specific criteria. And while I'm not gonna talk about those specific changes with this presentation, we do have that information available, if you all would like to review it again. So, with that, the FY '20 proposed sidewalk locations are Loving Way, Holly Drive, North Lee Drive, and Highland Way, for a total of just over 4,200 linear feet, or just short of one mile. And I'll take a few minutes to talk about each specific location. On the next few slides, you'll see the, the green lines represent existing sidewalk locations, while the yellow line represents our proposed project. So, for Loving Way, it will connect near the roundabout at Western Kentucky University, and will end at Rhodes Drive. While this sidewalk doesn't connect anything on roads, the fact that it's in close proximity to Western's campus, as well as construction will be easy as the yards are fairly flat, there's no drainage impacts, no utility impacts, this project ranked high on our list. The next one is Holly Drive, and it will go from Dennis Way to Catherine Drive. You can see the, the sidewalks along South Sunrise and Catherine were completed in previous years as part of the sidewalk program. There's also a section at the bottom of the screen that goes from Catherine to Morgantown Road, that was also completed as part of the sidewalk program. And then, so you can see how this project will close a loop within that neighborhood. The next location is North Lee Drive, and it will go from Trent Way north to Old Baron River Road. It's kinda hard to see on this layout, but there are several locations in orange. They are either part of the sidewalk program that was recently awarded, or part of the Census Track 112 sidewalk program funded by Neighborhood and Community Services. There are, the section on Croodson and North Lee up to Lee Point Apartments was funded with the Census Track project, and the section from Curbside Ministry across from Lee Point Apartments up to Trent Way was recently awarded for the FY '19 projects. And so, we will continue that project north from Trent Way all the way up to Old Baron River Road. And then our last project that we're proposing is Highland Way between Small House Road and Weston Street. With the recent completion of the Small House corridor improvements, we also constructed an eight-foot wide multi-use path, so the combination of the completion of that project, as well as the existing sidewalk along Weston Street made this project score high by completing that, that short gap. Any questions so far?
On this Highland Way, Weston, so there's no sidewalk on that side of Weston?
Along the?
That it, so it's just gonna stop there and then have a crosswalk to the existing sidewalk?
Yes, that's correct.
And then on the, is it Trent Way? What's the slide before this? So, is, where's the elementary school, and are there other points of interest, or do you go into that later in terms of Family Dollar and things like that?
I believe, as far as the Family Dollar, that's located on Glen Lally Road, so that's in close proximity to the project. Of course, you have Lee Point Apartments, High Density Residential there, so that's, there's a demand for pedestrians at that location. And then again, we're completing, it's a continuation of the, the Trent, or I'm sorry, the, the Lee Drive project from Trent Way north to Old Baron River Road.
And according to this map, there, any road included here, there would be green if there was existing sidewalk, so the only existing sidewalk in this whole area is on Glen Lally?
That's correct.
Okay.
You're far more knowledgeable than I am, but I thought there was a portion of sidewalk on Old Baron River Road.
I believe there is, we may not have included it.
But it's not in this picture.
Right, right. And then also, it's hard to see at the, at the top of the, the screen, there is a short section, believe, between what I believe is Grant and North Lee, that was also included as part of the Census Track 112 project.
Would you mind going back to the other pictures, 'cause I just might, I don't have the printout of this, and so I'm not, just, if you'll go to each picture, 'cause there might have been questions on each one, I guess.
Just Holly.
Oh, okay, so are these the new student apartments down there on the bottom of the screen?
The muse, that's right.
And, so this is gonna be connecting to an entrance there?
It will, and then there is a grade issue, the, the yard drops off sharply on this, on that side of the street, as you get closer toward Catherine, there's a trailer park there, and there's a grade issue, and so rather than try to fix that, we flip to the other side of the street and connect at, at Catherine Drive. But it's at the top of a crest, at the top of a hill, so site distance isn't an issue.
Is it, will there, I don't know if I'd want a crosswalk there or not, but will there be a crosswalk there that would allow people to?
Typically don't put that, what we call mid-block crossings.
Right.
Right.
But don't you think that, and I understand why we're doing it, but do you think it needs to be signaled in some way, because it, it encourages people to cross?
It does, we, we can definitely look into that, as part of the project.
Is what we put in front of the, oh shoot, why did it, Curbside Ministries, is that a mid, what did you just call the term?
It is, it is, yeah, that's something that we can consider.
So we do do it.
Yes, it's, it's called an RRFB, Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon, so it's, they push a button, and the signs flash, and it lets, gives motorists advanced warning that there are pedestrians in the street.
And what is this end of Holly Drive, that they would cross the street to then continue on?
Here it is, it, you can't see it on the screen, but I guess to the south, going toward Morgantown Road, there is a section of sidewalk currently on Holly.
Morgantown Road.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would ultimately connect Dennis Way to Morgantown Road.
Then, oh. Okay. Was there one more picture?
Living Way.
Do we have any sidewalks, like, once it gets to roads, where's the next sidewalk we have that direction?
Would, yeah, Cabal would be the closest location.
So, that's Smith, and then Morehead.
Yeah, so you have, as you go south, you have, you have Morehead, you have Ridge Crest, and then Cabal would be the next block over. To, to the east, yeah.
Those are all my questions on the pictures, thank you.
We do have neighborhood input information we would like to present, so at this time, I'd like to have Karen Foley with Neighborhood and Community Services come forward.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Hi. As part of the neighborhood outreach and the input, we provide several opportunities for the property owners in the specific project areas to provide us input, and we try to objectify it as much as we can, and I just wanted to walk through what those steps are. This, of course, they're gonna get a property owner letter. These go to property owners for properties on either side of the street, because at the start, we may not know which side of the street that that sidewalk needs to go on, and we focus on the property owners, because we know if there is going to be any opposition, that is the likely source where we will find it. So, we wait until we have the prioritized projects at the top of the list, before we vet these projects with the neighborhood. It wouldn't have done us any good to do this five years ago, when we're not doing a project then. So, we wait until they rise on the list and get to this point. So, they get a letter. Included in the letter is a comment response card. We try to number those responses, we are using as current of PVA information as we can, and we track those comment cards to come back to us. Included in that letter also is Kyle's email address and his telephone number, so people can reach out to him directly if they like. One of the things that we did that was new this year is we did provide an online option for people to be able to go online and complete a Survey Monkey link, which basically has the exact same information that you would find on the comment card. Each of those were individualized for each particular project, so we know where those responses are coming from. And that Survey Monkey link is gonna look something like this. The QR code is just an added feature, someone can scan that, their letter with their phone or other device and go straight to the, to the link. And then when they go to it, it's gonna look something like this. It's gonna have sort of a disclaimer at the top, and the, the timeframe that those comments need to be submitted by, their property address, and basically, we're just asking them, do you support or you do not support, and what are your comments that you have for us? Another part that we have is we do have a, an open house. One disclaimer, this is from a previous open house, not for this particular batch of projects, but we held the one this year on June 6th at Neighborhood and Community Services, which was sort of a centralized location for these different project location areas, and that gives people an opportunity to come and talk directly with staff and ask questions. So, the, the outreach looked something like this. We had a little over 100 separate, unduplicated property owners, we had about 15 people who signed in for our open house, we actually recorded 42 unduplicated property owner responses across all the projects. We only had eight people, or eight households, take advantage of the Survey Monkey, but that's fine. And our overall response rate for all of them was close to 40%, so we feel pretty good about having that. I will tell you that we did send a specific mailing about today's work session, of course, it is the week of 4th of July, so you do have that. And one thing I do?
At 4:30?
Yes, at 4:30. And one thing I do wanna point out is we, we do operate under something called assumed consent, and we do that because at the time that the city commission established our new sidewalk program, they did that because they wanted to focus on connectivity, walkability, making our neighborhoods safe places for people to walk. And so, because that remains one of your goals, under our mission as the City of Bowling Green, we adopted the stance that we should err on the side of people want this unless they tell us otherwise, and that is directly connected to the strategy that you all have continued to establish by funding this program from years, from year to year. So, that's why we have an assumed consent. On the Survey Monkey link, on the letter, it says, if you do not provide feedback to us, we will assume that you consent to the project. So, that's included. So, people who read the letter and they're like, hey, I'm good with that, and they don't reach out, they don't have to do anything. We assume that they consent. So, I wanna make sure you understand that, before I move into what the results were. And here on Loving Way, we have two blue circles, blue being, yes, we support. In this particular project, we heard from no one who provided any opposition whatsoever. All the feedback that was referred, returned back to us, they were giving us a thumbs up. On Holly Drive, we had a response rate of almost 47%, and you see a little bit how that assumed consent makes a difference. The circle there on the left shows 33% did not support the project. If you add in your assumed consent, the people who do not respond back, so we assume they're good, then that opposition falls to not quite 7%. And one thing to note, the opposition is only on the odd-numbered side of the street. So, sometimes that could inform, or not, which side of the street we choose to build on.
So, we don't know yet which side we're building on on that one?
I don't know, but these guys may.
So, are we building on the odd or even?
Do you know?
It switches on that one.
Yeah, on, on Holly, it does switch, but the sides shown in the exhibits, those are the sides that we propose to build on.
And do we know if the folks who live on the odd side that oppose, do they live in the section that you're building on the odd side?
No. All the letters that went out did not propose a particular side.
Correct.
Now, if they came out to the open house and they looked at their drawing, for, for example, and it showed it on that side, then they would walk away with that assumption that that's where it's gonna go.
I guess my question is, the neighbors who live on, on the odd side of the street, when it switched, when the sidewalk switches to the odd side of the street, is it on the section of the street where their house resides? Will it be in front of their house?
I don't know if it's on the odd or even.
I'm not sure. Would you have that information?
I don't remember, I didn't bring it, no.
Okay. We, we can look into that.
We can look it up.
Okay.
Yeah, we can review that.
So, North Lee, which, in full disclosure, is a little confusing, because we have pieces of North Lee that are already being built, and it does change sides of the street. This information went just to the neighbors who do not have any sidewalk currently planned. So, the people that it's being funded through Neighborhood Improvement Program or through the extension that was included in the bid you awarded tonight, they were not included in this mailing. This mailing was only for the next section, which would be Trent Way to Old Baron River Road. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes. So, in that, you had a 37% response rate. Out of that, 10% were opposed, and when you add in the assumed consent, this 3.7%, that's actually one person is opposed in this section. I wanna go to Highland Way next, to, to look at this graph, and then we'll, we'll talk a little bit about what some of that input was. On Highland Way, we had a 53% response rate, which is really good. I think the total number of owners is only 15, so it's not a huge number of owners, and again, this is both sides of the street, and this is what it looks like when you have the majority of your responses that are not in supportive, are not supportive of the, the project. When you add in the assumed consent, which is the piece where people do not take an action, and we assume you're good with it, it switches to favor. I just wanted to point that out, and then, how do I go back? Okay, so, what was some of the input they provided? And again, we, you know, we're asking for comments, which is very open-ended, and, and I know that you guys have seen some of those. To sum up what kinda categories that we heard from, these are not unusual. Someone has a particular driveway issue, they're concerned about that, they're concerned about drainage, these are things that we, that we hear sometimes as we're doing these projects. There were some concerns about connectivity to other parts of the neighborhood, privacy concerns. We do hear, we've been doing these for years now, and sometimes people, they don't have, they don't place- We do hear, we've been doing these for years now, and sometimes people, they don't have, they don't place a high value on sidewalks. They don't understand how sidewalks provide value, and we know that we will sometimes hear that. And we also got some positive comments about the sidewalks as well. That's all that I have on the input. But Kyle and I are both here.
Well, I guess for Kyle, the sidewalk construction on Highland, was it curb and sidewalk or sidewalk on the far side of the ditch?
It will be what we call at-grade sidewalk. It's without any curb and gutter. It would be between the edge of pavement and the ditch.
Can you describe that in more detail, because I don't understand that language, I'm sorry.
Sure, yeah. So, a close location, so on Small House Road, you have the curb and gutter. At the edge of pavement, you have the foot and a half wide gutter pan and the six-inch tall curb with the multi-use path on the backside of the curb. Highland would not have that. It would not have the curb and gutter. It would just be a sidewalk flush with the ground.
Got it.
Yep. So, that way, it will minimize drainage impacts.
That's for drainage.
Right, that's correct.
Do we use pervious pavement for our sidewalks?
Typically, we do not.
Have we ever looked at that in terms of cost and?
We have not looked at that as part of the program. I'm not sure how it relates to typical concrete as far as, you know, cost per cubic yard.
Because if a lot of the comments were around drainage, and some of what I heard was that they have sort of historical issues because of parking lots that have been added near their parking lot that then has added to drainage problems in their yards.
Yards and downstream.
And so then, is this going to add more parts of their yard that can't soak in rain, so?
Compared to the overall area of the yard, it's not a whole lot. I don't know what an exact percentage would be, but it wouldn't be enough to impact, you know, drainage onto their property. But with, without the curb and gutter along the edge of pavement, there's no need to add a drainage infrastructure to capture the water and carry it somewhere else. So, this would allow water to flow across the property as it does today.
I have a question for Karen. First of all, let me say that I support the assumed consent philosophy. People are busy. If they like it, they're less likely to complain about it or to have input on it. My question regarding the Highland Way neighborhood input is, and generally, when we use informed consent or assumed consent, what we have is, it's not close. In this particular case, it gets close, you know? It goes from 75 to 25 to 40 to 60, with 60 being in favor. If we look at the responses received, the 25% that were in favor, did any of those, if you know, 25% say, "I want the sidewalk on my side of the road"? Okay. And do you know roughly of that 25%, how many said they, and I know that's a complicated question?
I know there was at least one.
Okay. And of the 75%, that, do you know how many of the 75% didn't want it on their side of the road? In addition, is there a way to parse out the drainage issues, the driveway issues, and get down to, "I'm opposed to this because I don't want it on my side of the road"? What I'm trying to do is figure out is, is the location of the sidewalk that important to the overall goal that the city is trying to accomplish of building sidewalks and making the community walkable?
I'm trying to recall specifically, because I did look at that. When I'm looking at the responses, one of the reasons why we number them the way we do is because we're trying to figure out which blocks the opposition is in and which side of the street the opposition is in. And sometimes, that's a reflection because the neighbors in this block all get together and they decide together, and then they report together. But then, sometimes, it's because they're experiencing different things day to day. And forgive me, because I could be confusing the two locations in my mind. But it seems like the folks closer to Weston, they are closer to that actual intersection. So, they're thinking about the traffic at that intersection or the things they, versus if you're closer to the small house end, that's more of your day-to-day interaction. But I would say, and of course, there's a Public Works thing to this to weigh in also, but most of the time, if someone tells me they're opposed to a sidewalk, it's because they don't want it in front of their house. That's just, that's just been my experience. And they may offer other reasons related to traffic, and I take them at their word, that's what they mean. But usually, if I hear someone say, "I don't want to see a sidewalk on this block of my street," their concern is they don't want it in front of their house.
Will you show me that picture again of the Highland Way project?
And do you know, like you did with the other road, if, have you broken it down in terms of you do have more support or assumed support on one side than the other?
I can look at that. My best recollection, and I actually had printed this to bring with me, and it didn't make it into my folder. But my best recollection is, it wasn't so much concentrated. It was both sides. And we did talk about, we did talk about this with people when they came to the open house. And I can tell you anecdotally from the conversations, not the recorded responses, but from the conversations, even people who weren't super enthused about, "Well, I don't really want it in front of my house, but I understand why you would want it there." I mean, because they do understand why, in the bigger picture, it would be a good idea. It was just for them, that was not necessarily their first preference to have the sidewalk in front of their house. So, I can't attribute that to a particular block range off the top of my head. But I think there was a feeling when you explained it to people, they knew why it was being proposed. They just maybe didn't personally support the project.
You have the list of all the ones that were kind of at the top of our list at this point and the criteria that we used to select these four?
I'm pretty sure Kyle has it.
So, I can look at that at a later date?
You can, yes, you can.
Okay.
Yeah, we have that available.
Okay.
Well, I'm still turned up. It's a 60-40 split when we look at assumed consent. Pardon me?
I couldn't do the math either.
It's a 60-40 split when we look at assumed consent.
It's 15 people.
Dad, gone, you took away the other picture.
Need me to go back?
No, 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 no. Surely, I can, I'm smarter to figure this out. Maybe, maybe.
Again, the 75-25 split, that is with responses received. That's either the comment cards that Karen sent out, or it's the emails, I believe that you all have had a chance to read, or it's phone calls that we've received. So, those are actually what we know how people feel.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is that, under the assumed consent, is it fair to assume that those individuals who did not respond don't really care where the location of the sidewalk is and that they just support a sidewalk?
Generally, right.
Whether it's on their side of the road or the other side of the road?
Right, right.
And so, if that were the case, I mean, look, the ability of the government to use, to force things, I understand that that ability is there. I think it should be used sparingly, but I understand that it's there. But I guess my question is, is if 60%, factoring in assumed consent, 60% say, "We support the project, but we don't really care where it is," then why would we not simply move it to the other side of the road as opposed to keeping it where it's at? Where it's being proposed, where we know 75% of the people are opposed?
Figure that out.
It's like one of those middle school word problems, you know? Two oranges went to the train station.
If you knew, if you knew the number of responses, do you have the number of responses on the left side?
I can look that up. I can look that up. Yeah, I mean, I know that. I just, I don't have it in front of me. I do want to add that, you know, through this input or vetting process, I mean, over the years, we have done everything from scrap a project altogether to shorten the number of blocks that are included, to move on down the list. And, I mean, basically, this component of it, we're trying to take something that's very subjective and present it as objectively as possible because this part of it is not the engineering, it's not the science. It's the subjective, the political part of it. So, it's really, you know, what you guys are comfortable with in terms of those two squares. And I can go back and I can check. I think when I looked at it, it wasn't an easy, "Oh, the people who don't want it are all here." Because we have had scenarios where it is easier to do that, and then we just bring that information to you that way. But you're right, this one is-
And assumed consent just gets a little more tricky for me, just me personally as one commissioner, when it gets so close together. You know, when you have overwhelming numbers one way or the other, it's a much easier decision to make. I just want to know, and I believe we have, but I want to ask the question on the record so that there's a public response to it. We evaluated all the different places that the sidewalk could be, and we evaluated that this is the best place for it. Moving it to the other side of the road poses some challenge to having it there.
And for this example, looking at Highland-
You go to that picture?
Sure. So, the side that we are recommending is the left side. As you travel from Small House toward Weston, it ranked first based on our criteria. The right side of the street ranked third. So, it's very close.
Say that again to me.
Yeah. The side that we're proposing, based on our scoring criteria, ranked first. The other side of the street ranked third.
Okay.
On all the sidewalks and all the city?
Throughout all the city, in, I think, about 180 locations. Because we consider each side of the street as a separate project. So, out of 180 locations, so there's like 90 actual streets, this street ranked at the top.
Can you explain a little bit about why this ranked as the biggest or the top priority for our city to consider for a sidewalk?
One of the things that we look at is, it's called our gap score. Does it close a connection with existing sidewalk network? In this case, it does. It also looks at the length of the gap. It's a rather short gap compared to others throughout the city. We also have what's called technical feasibility. Basically, it's how easy it is to construct at a particular location. We look at drainage impacts, utility impacts, private property impacts, such as, is there on-street parking? Are there trees? Are there mailboxes? You know, fences, things like that, that would have to be removed in order to complete a project. So, all that gets factored in as part of the scoring criteria.
What about, I know we have a heat map for when we do our street overlay. Do we do a heat map for sidewalks?
Do, we have. That was actually one of the criteria changes as of last year. We look at, and Greg, you may be able to explain it a little bit better, but we have, we break it down into destinations and generators. So, a school would be a destination. High-density residential would be potentially a generator. And so, we do have a way to differentiate those, those types of demand.
Well, the sidewalk in the location that you have proposed, is it going to close the width or shorten the width of the road?
No, we're not proposing that.
We would build approximately two to three feet off the edge of pavement into the yards with a five-foot-wide sidewalk.
Already own that. I mean, that's already right-of-way. Not purchasing any additional property.
Right. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, sorry. The other side, there is no parking?
No, there is no on-street parking on either side. Just driveways to access the houses, and we repair those, each individual driveway as part of the project.
Is there signage on the street saying, "No parking on the right side"?
Currently, on Highland, there's not, no.
Oh, a person, let's say, visiting can park out on the street. If that person or others park out on the street, what is it going to do to the width of the street? You're not going to be able to have two cars in opposite direction because one is going to have to pull up and stop and let the other come through. So, why would we not put no parking on the other side?
On this project, we're not affecting the travel lane widths. In other words, we're not taking away from the existing road. Currently, as far as I know, I don't see people parking on Highland. I don't live there, but I don't think that happens. So, it's not really a concern on this segment of, that we're proposing for sidewalks. Some segments, it certainly is. There are people that are parking on right-of-way right now that, no matter which side of the road we went on, it was, you know, there's going to be a conflict and an issue that we have to address to get the sidewalk in. But it's not the case on Highland. So, what we have to do, and I think, go back to your question, Slim, a while back, is about, do we still meet the city's goal of sidewalks and connectivity regardless of the side that we go on? We do. Now, there are considerations like intersections where people have to cross. Maybe they have to cross three legs of the intersection to get to a particular place to provide that connectivity. That's a consideration. The reason that you have different ranks on different sides of the same segment of road is because of the cost of construction. And these are only, right now, rough estimates because, again, there's 180-some segments of sidewalks. And that's not just block segments, that can be longer segments of sidewalks that we evaluate, and we put a rough number on based upon those conflicts that are easy to see. Of course, when we're in the selection process, we don't know what's underground. We could have underground utilities impacted too, that's a cost. So, we don't know that for sure. But what we can see above ground, again, telephone poles, drainage structures, fire hydrants, you know, they have to be moved if they're in the way. We try to, like we did on Small House, we try to go in and out and be circuitous if we can, you know, get the sidewalk in without, you know, moving power poles. We do that to save money. So, it's a matter of, it does meet the goals of the city, but the cost is a factor too. It has to be because because of that, if we chose only the ones that were the most expensive, we could do less. We could have less connectivity, less sidewalks for people to use.
And do we know, excellent point. I appreciate you bringing it to my attention. Do we know the cost difference if it were built on the other side?
We have rough numbers.
Rough, yeah, rough numbers. Typically, we use a standard cost per foot based on history of bids that we have on other projects. And it looks like maybe $4,000 or $5,000 difference going from one's. It would be more, about $4,000, $5,000 more expensive to go to the right side of the street.
And I'm not shaking a stick at $4,000 or $5,000. Don't misunderstand me, but in the grand scheme of how much money we're spending, $4,000 or $5,000 seems-
We have to be relative about how that affects everything else. If we make this decision on this sidewalk, what are we going to do on the next sidewalk when it's $50,000 difference?
Yeah.
Or $100,000 difference. So, I know that seems, you know, it's a little far-fetched in this case.
No, I don't think it's far-fetched.
We have some that are only $100 apart, difference, but still, they get ranked.
And based on other factors, one's ranked second and the other one is ranked 20th.
Do we consider, because once we build this, if we build this section, then the part of Highland from Small House to Asheville Road gets bumped up a little bit, and so does the part from Weston to, which will eventually be Menards? So, do we, just so that we don't do what we're doing on, is it Holly Drive where we're going from one end of the street, and then, oh, this side is better to do this side, so then, we have a midway, we'll have to cross the street in the middle of the road to get to the sidewalk on this side? Do we evaluate for future uses or future plans, which one's going to be most expensive when we expand it so that we're all on the same page of not just for- when we expand it, so that we're all on the same page of, not just for this section, it makes the most sense, but the future sidewalks, this is going to be the way to do, get them all on the same side for the cheapest amount? Do we include that in the ranking?
We do look at that. We can't, of course, the, the scores are based upon the model runs that we make. It's not, it's kind of a, a separate process from actually us looking at it on a map and picking, so it kind of helps develop itself. But we, we ground-truth it, in other words. So if, for the rest of Highland Way, fortunately, we've got a signalized intersection, so we could switch the sides of the road. People can cross at crosswalks that are protected or four-way stops. That's okay. So we can actually switch it to the other side of the road without a lot of consequence in terms of the people being safely going from one section to another. So, we consider it, but it's not a driving force always. If it were, that, you know, we'd have to lay out a plan in advance that would probably sell short some of the other criteria that we're looking for. So it's, it's a balance. I understand what you're saying. It's a, it's an overall plan, but you can't plan for everything because things change. There's a subdivision now being built on Highland Way that may or may not be a large attractor of pedestrians. So, we look at it the best we can in context.
So do we know, for those other sections of Highland, which side?
We do have those ranked.
We do.
Oh, okay.
So, we can provide you that to review.
Okay.
But that can change next year.
It could.
The, you know, the rankings can change. Always keep that in mind.
We do, because this is a request-driven program, so as, as new requests come in, we evaluate those every year, so it could bump up to the top, which shifts everything else down currently on the list.
But in terms of which side of the street is ranked higher?
That won't change.
Because that's my question, is which, do we know which side of the street ranks higher for the other sections of Highland?
We do, we have those numbers, we, we can give those to you.
Those could change, though.
It could change. That's right.
Yeah, I mean, it could, even the cost related to it could change.
Absolutely. They've gone up significantly.
Yes.
Since the beginning of the program, that's correct.
Thank you, gentlemen. I know there's some neighbors that have showed up to give us some input. I know Mr. Burns, you're not, it's not affecting you on Patrick, but you have an opportunity to come and talk? You're, you're happy that we're not messing with you, I understand. Jim, did you have anything? Mr. Adams, did you have anything? Did you have anything? I know you came to the meeting, I just...
I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right.
I do want to make a full disclosure, I'm, I'm Mr. Adams' neighbor, about three doors down, and I live on Highland Way. I'm trying not to have an opinion here, so, you know, but I will tell you that I see a lot of people walking up and down that street, and...
I can't hear you, Mr. Adams, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. And did I miss any neighbors, any other neighbors in here? All right. So what are you looking for us for tonight, Mr. Hunt?
We would like to get a consensus from you all on how to move forward with Highland. I think the other locations are relatively clear, as far as their support for those, but we would like to have direction from you all as to how to move forward with this project. And again, we can provide you the rankings and all of that information to review, and then if, if you want to take the time to do that...
I was going to say, I think you have four clear, or clear direction on four of the items, but if you don't mind providing the information that they've talked about, and let us get back with you on that.
We'll do that.
Since I am one of the neighbors over there, it would be nice to know, you know, if there was, if, if which side of the street it was more popular on than the other, and, you know, we, we have some neighbors that are probably going to be concerned, and so...
Absolutely.
I'm sure I'll, I'll hear that.
Hold me to it. He has two questions. I have two questions, and the mayor's going to hold me to it. And it's related to sidewalks. It's not about this project, but it's related to sidewalks, and so I, I want to ask while I have. I used to take care of a property on Glen Lilly Road. I don't, I don't anymore, but, and so I, I was always reluctant to bring it up because I had, you know, somewhat of a interest in it. But when there is curb and gutter, how do we go about cleaning that?
We have a street sweeper.
And does it go to roads like that, or does it stay primarily in downtown?
It does, there is a, the city's divided into work zones, and they are addressed through that. Glen Lilly, in that case, it is actually a state-maintained road, so, I believe...
But we still sweep it.
Okay, so...
It just, as I drive down Glen Lilly, I don't drive down it as much as I used to because I don't care for that property, but in the gutter, it tends to col- there's grass growing, and I mean, you know, sometimes better grass than what you'll find in some yards. And so I just, a- a- as we develop the curb and gutter, which I support, I just wonder how we go about ensuring that we're cleaning it to the best of our ability, too. I mean, I understand somebody can't do it every day, but it is on some kind of cycle, and it does go to those locations, not just downtown.
It does. As far as I know, and I'll get with Bobby just to check and make sure, that we sweep all the curb and gutters in town regardless of the jurisdiction of the roadway, so, state roads.
And this is my second question.
Oh, you done asked three on that one.
You guys are on me. The, the second question is, when dirt is replaced? And I don't know how much dirt is replaced necessarily on a sidewalk, but I talked to a, a person caring for a property on Small House Road for a, a mother who is ill, who has received code violations for the height of their grass, and their grass really wasn't returned to what it once was. So the dirt that was dumped in as part of that project came from somewhere else. It has those, I don't know, I call them cotton tails, I don't really know what they are, but that grow much faster than does the rest of the grass. And, and that seems frustrating for somebody to go through the process of saying, "Yes, I consent, I like this project." We say things like, "We're going to make sure that you're returned to as whole as possible," and then we dump field dirt in there that has come from someplace else that brings with it whatever it brings, and then it's incumbent upon the property owner to then start seeding and treating and, and things like that. So do we, when we're looking at bids, do we look at that?
And it is, it is not just field dirt, it is topsoil that's put in. The problem is, even with topsoil, when you manipulate it, you get, just like weeds that grow in your yard, they, they come in, and if you don't maintain it, very often, weeds tend to be more hardy than grass. So if you don't mow your grass, you know, it, it tends to choke out what little bit is, is trying to grow. So, there are times, too, when you have new projects, you have maybe dirt exposed, a lot of rain, you get some of the topsoil that washes out, and you have to come back and work on it. And we do that as part of, of our long-term maintenance. Generally, a project is guaranteed for about a year, so we know that seeding and sod are items that we have to go back on routinely to, because it's, maybe it's a, you know, we haven't had that problem lately, but you don't get rain in the summer. So if you seed in June, it's probably not going to do very well compared to what you may seed in the fall. So all those kind of issues play together, and we do go back and make sure that we get what we call an acceptable stand of grass, or we make sure that the sod grows as it was intended or it's replaced.
And do you...
So, in this particular, I think I know what you're talking about, in this particular case, it was a, it was a combination of several things, but we're working with that property owner to make sure that that's taken care of.
Oh, okay. I don't know that it's the same one, they did mention that to me, but, but that doesn't mean that it's, it's not done.
I think, I think I know what you're talking about, and I, I know, it's good.
I have two questions.
I'm all right.
Okay. I talked Joe into submission.
I, I'm not ready to give my consent until I get all the information I need, so if I can get that information, then I can let you all know.
That tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll hold off on posting any of this online until we do that.
Okay.
We post a whole list generally, so we can, we can hold off if you want.
And, and what we'll do, once, once we do have consensus, we'll bring these forward for, at, to, for a municipal order in order to approve the projects, as well as give us permission to enter into acquisition negotiations with any impacted...
Utility relocations.
Right. So, but we'll provide that information tomorrow.
Can I make one? Just in case anyone is looking online at the new sidewalk program, and they're looking at the list that's online, and just so you guys know, that list that's online is from the current fiscal year we're in. It does not reflect anything that we have talked about tonight. So, that, the list that he's got right here has been recalculated for this year. So if you start comparing what you've heard tonight, and you go look at the list that's on the website, that's what he was talking about, we will publish that later, there's a difference there. If you go and you look at that list now, it's not going to match what we've talked about tonight, because that won't happen until you guys give the thumbs up on the prioritization. So if anyone's checking at home, I just want to make sure that they're clear about that. Does that make sense?
But giving a thumbs up on a prioritization is a different thing, or that's what we're doing tonight?
It's what we're doing tonight, right? Yes.
Oh, okay. So you mean just these four sidewalks? Got it.
Thank you. The only individual left on our public comment is Ms. Mentor, I think you had a comment, please.
Me and Jerry Burns is not going to say anything.
He waved me off. He said, "You're not messing with me on Patrick, he doesn't care."
I hadn't seen him in 30 years, and he comes down not going to say anything. Good to see you, buddy.
Good to see you.
All right, Ms. Mentor, thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Representative Patty Mentor, and I serve Bowling Green's 20th House District in the State House of Representatives. For three years, your constituents have come to you, and they've told you their stories about their loved ones, their families, their own experiences with discrimination. And two months ago, three of you voted against the fairness ordinance that would have guaranteed equal rights for them in housing, employment, and public accommodations. To Commissioners Nash and Beasley-Brown, we thank you. You're on the right side of history, and we re- and I recognize, as elected officials, we all have a moral responsibility to act. We told you then that Henderson was having conversations about passing the fairness ordinance again there. They'd passed it in 1999, but it was repealed two years later. Well, I'm proud to bring you the news this evening that Henderson has now passed it, becoming the 11th city in Kentucky to do so. I'm delighted that our fellow citizens in Henderson no longer have to fear discrimination simply because of who they are. And their decision to once again pass fairness became not only statewide news, but national news. A very flattering story appeared in USA Today that held Henderson up as a model of how rural Americans' attitudes about LGBTQ equality have changed since 1999. One city resident said, quote, "I'm glad it's happening, I just wish it hadn't taken 20 years." Well, I couldn't agree with her more. Like so many Kentuckians who work for equality, I celebrate with Henderson, but I wish it hadn't taken 20 years, and I wish it wasn't going to take longer here in Bowling Green. Had any of the three of you who voted against equality cast your vote differently, our city could have been the one in USA Today being held up as that model, getting statewide positive coverage. Instead, the cries are still going out on social media, and they lit up again after Henderson passed it. Why not Bowling Green? Because not only is protecting basic human dignity the right thing to do, but I think we've shown clearly it's the smart thing to do. As I said in this chamber on May 7th, fairness is good for business. As a reminder, protecting the rights of all Kentuckians is now one of the top priorities of the, of the Kentucky State Chamber of Commerce, who told state legislators during the 2019 session not to pass discriminatory legislation, and they specifically called out the misleading religious liberty arguments that were advanced in this chamber as being bad for business. The tide is turning, folks. Henderson shows us that the moral arc is clearly bending toward fairness, and you can still choose to be a part of that. Three of you chose to stand on the wrong side of history, and people across the state...
Your time has expired.
I'm almost finished. Genuinely wonder why you refuse to pass this law.
Please understand that we provide three minutes for everybody to speak on things like that. I'm sorry that your time has expired.
Well, as long as those, this one minute, sir, as long of us who support equal rights and dignity stand, we will keep standing for our friends, our loved ones.